One who are in our viewing audience out in Pitt County and all of our people who are filling up our auditorium today, we're glad to see all of you. I'd like to call our meeting to order and we'll do the roll call, please.
Madam Chairman, I believe we have Glenn Webb absent today and I believe we have Mary Perkins-Williams by teleconference telephone if she's on the line. The staff could confirm that?
Can you hear us?
Yes, I hear you very well.
Okay, good. We hear you too. Welcome.
Thank you.
Have we completed?
Just to mention it not only to it might be his trust present one more time. Got it that time.
On Commissioner Webb's absence, is the board excusing the absence? Is that part of the motion?
If you'll need a motion.
Second.
Okay. Do we need to vote?
Yes.
I get out.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, thank you, Mary. Okay, we'll now have our invocation by Commissioner McGlaughlin and our pledge by Commissioner Nunley. Please stand.
Where shall Father come first of all to tell you thank you. We thank you for life, health, and strength. He asks you, the Father, to come into this meeting, have us make the decision that will be pleasing to you. These in all blessings, we in thy holy name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So move.
I move.
Second.
Okay, let's vote, please. Thank you. Okay, we have three presentations. Mr. Elliott, if you'll start with the first one.
Yes, the first presentation is the proclamation recognizing January 2019 as Human Trafficking Awareness and Prevention Month. And I believe we have Pam Strickland, if she's in the audience. And Madam Clerk, do we have a frame resolution for that down front?
Any other constituents here, please join us at the front.
Good morning.
We'll make a semicircle here maybe and yeah, let Pam come on the side. Let her pass out. Sheriff, can you come over here with, yeah.
Okay.
You want us behind the table?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's what.
Yeah.
We need you all too. We need you all.
Madam Chairman, would you like me to read the proclamation prepared?
Yes, sir, please.
Proclamation recognizing January 2019 as Human Trafficking Awareness and Prevention Month. Whereas, human trafficking involves the recruitment, harboring, transportation, provision, buying, or selling of human beings for the services of labor or commercial sex through the use of force, fraud, or coercion. And whereas, human trafficking violates the face of human rights and deprives victims of human dignity and freedom, victims are dehumanized and forced into modern-day slavery. And whereas, human trafficking is a growing global and national problem, with North Carolina consistently ranked among the top 10 states for the prevalence of human trafficking. And whereas, it is imperative that we educate our communities, our young people and families to take an active interest in learning how to recognize the risks and resist predators who use coercion, coercion, hey, sorry, coercion, thank you, and threats to manipulate children as young as 12 into labor or sex trafficking. Whereas, in recognition of the need for that education, the North Carolina General Assembly recently enacted legislation mandating that sex trafficking prevention and awareness information be included in the sexual health education curriculum. Whereas, every law enforcement officer in North Carolina received human trafficking training in 2016. And whereas, in recognition of the importance of access to services, the North Carolina General Assembly enacted legislation effective January 1, 2018, requiring that businesses post the National Human Trafficking Hotline. And whereas, the Pitt County Coalition Against Human Trafficking seeks to eradicate human trafficking by empowering organizations and individuals through collaboration, leadership, and training. And whereas, the Pitt County Sheriff's Office, the Pitt County Department of Social Services, Pitt County Schools, and many other organizations are active members of the Pitt County Coalition Against Human Trafficking. And whereas, Pitt County is committed to protecting people vulnerable to human trafficking and taking action to end human trafficking through prevention, prosecution, and partnerships. Now therefore, the Pitt County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim January 2019 as Human Trafficking Awareness and Prevention Month in Pitt County and commend its observance to all citizens. Adopted the 7th day of January 2019, signed by our Chairman Beth B. Ward and attested by our Clerk Kimberly W. Hines. Chairman?
Thank you for what you do and everyone else who's supporting you. Yes, please.
I just wanted to say thank you to the Pitt County Government for the support that the Pitt County Coalition has received. Our coalition was formed just a couple of years ago and many community members that are a part of it, and part of that is the Sheriff's Department. We also have Pitt County DSS as a part of our coalition, Teddy Bear Child Advocacy Center, Pitt County Schools. So we're just grateful for the participation on the coalition and specifically this past year. The county manager has been especially supportive, allowing me to do a mini-training for the department heads of Pitt County Government. That resulted in us being able to do a training for the zoning department, a training for Pitt County DSS, as well as a training that was open to all Pitt County employees. So we're grateful for that support and we look forward to continuing to work with Pitt County Government to find ways that we can work together to end human trafficking here at Pitt County. Thank you.
Hey, how about, would you all introduce yourselves? The high sheriff.
We're grateful for your support.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think we're going to go ahead and if we get the board's indulgence to go ahead and do the resolution honoring Dr. Delbridge so we don't have to jump back down in a moment.
We can give a motion to adopt both resolutions.
Okay, I have a motion to adopt both resolutions. Second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
We can ask our medical director, Dr. Patel, to come down and then Dr. Delbridge and anybody else that he would like to have join either the two doctors. Family members, support staff, who?
Excuse me.
So this morning, we would like to honor Dr. Delbridge and we've got a resolution behind the chairman here. Let me grab this. And Dr. Patel also has something he's going to present as well. Thank you. We'd like to start with the county's resolution first. Okay. Madam Chairman, you'd like me to proceed with this, again beautifully framed and hopefully crafted resolution. Resolution of appreciation honoring Theodore R. Delbridge, M.D., M.P.H. for his years of service to the citizens of Pitt County. Whereas, Dr. Delbridge, M.D., has served the citizens of Pitt County faithfully during his tenure as the Chairman of the Department of Emergency Medicine from 2006 through 2019 at ECU's Brody School of Medicine. Whereas, Dr. Delbridge served as a member of the North Carolina EMS Advisory Council of the Office of Emergency Medical Services, member of the Pitt County EMS Oversight Committee, and served as Program Director for the EMS Fellowship at Vidant Medical Center, ECU. And whereas, Dr. Delbridge has done significant work in telemedicine and led a communications center that provided continuous emergency medical support for a number of commercial airlines and travel medicine firms. And whereas, Dr. Delbridge held the position of Secretary/Treasurer and President of the National Association of EMS Physicians, otherwise known as the NAEMPS, and President of the Association of Academic Chairs of Emergency Medicine, or the AACEM, and currently serves as the editor of the Annual Emergency Medicine and as evaluator for the American Board of Emergency Medicine. Whereas, Dr. Delbridge was committed to the education of EMS professionals in the Pitt County area and has been diligent in keeping emergency medical service employees up to date on their certifications and documentation. Now therefore, it be resolved that the Pitt County Board of Commissioners does hereby honor Theodore R. Delbridge, M.D., for his commitment to the citizens of Pitt County, emergency and non-emergency EMS providers, as well as Pitt County's 911 Center, and for his outstanding and admirable service to the departments of Pitt County. Again, adopted the 7th day of January 2019, signed by our Chairman Beth B. Ward, attested by our Clerk Kimberly W. Hines.
You've been with us a long time and you've been the county head to take over EMS all over the state of North Carolina. You've been there with us and you've helped bring us to where we are and I am so proud of what EMS is doing in Pitt County. And thank you so much for your service. You're going to be missed.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
So we have something else for him. I apologize, still laughing, so I'm going to open. My wife wrapped it very well. So I have this little mess flag for him. I'm going to read it if you don't mind.
That's fine.
Although you read it better than me.
You'll be great.
Certified achievement presented to Theodore Ted Delbridge, M.D., M.P.H. On behalf of Pitt County EMS and its citizens, we thank you for your direction, perspective, and support over the last 12 years. Since your arrival to ECU, your leadership and involvement has been instrumental in the continued success of our EMS system. Your vision has brought new awareness to EMS that affect patient outcomes today. We're extremely sad to see you go, but we are excited for everything that you have helped us accomplish and what the future holds for you. We wish you clear skies and tailwinds. Signed, January 7, 2019. And it has the Pitt County Physician Patch for the EMS system and the North Carolina Medical Director's Patch on it, along with the Medical Director's Coins for EMS.
Thank you again. Would you like to say?
Well, this is totally unexpected and so I'm fairly unprepared. Otherwise, I surely would have prepared a few spontaneous words. I would just like to say that my family and I have cherished living in Pitt County for the last 13 years. It has been a great place to be, to be from, and to raise our children. We will surely, this being here, I will cherish these always and hang them in a place of prominence so that people in Maryland, wherever we're going, will surely know the great things happening in Pitt County. Any appreciation for me is seriously misplaced. I am surrounded by a team of great people and EMS physicians, the specialists in emergency medicine and emergency medical services, the leadership of emergency management, EMS professionals and volunteers throughout the county, the volunteer and professional firefighters, the sheriff's office, the police department, all really collaborate to make emergency services in Pitt County what they are, and they're fabulous. I'll just point out one last thing. When I came here 13 years ago, we struggled sometimes to save the lives of people who were in serious distress. And now Pitt County is amongst the leaders in North Carolina in terms of saving people in cardiac arrest and other major things. And that's really due to the collaboration of all those people, and I was just happy to be a part. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Board of Commissioners. As you all know, there are two main functions of all local government finance offices, one being our annual audit and the other being our budget. Today, we're going to talk about an audit and I have with me today Elsa Watts. She is the Audit Manager of Martin &amp; Sterns and she is going to present the independent audit that we are required to do after the close of the June 30, 2018 fiscal year. If you have any questions, please feel free to ask her. And here's Ms. Watts.
Thank you. Good morning, everyone. On behalf of Martin Sterns and Associates, I'd like to present Pitt County's 2018 audited financial statements. Some audit highlights. The county received an unmodified opinion. This is a clean audit opinion. I'd like to thank Brian Barnett, as well as Chris McDaniel, the rest of the Finance Department. They have done a lot of hard work this year on the audit. We stay in contact with them throughout the year. It's been a pleasure working with Pitt County this year and we look forward to continuing that working relationship. Looking at your general fund, total fund balance for the general fund was $40.9 million. You had non-spendable items, prepaid expenses, of $119,000. You had items restricted by state statute of $9.6 million, and this calculation gives you an available fund balance of $31.1 million. The LGC uses this calculation to compare you to other units, and this is an increase in available fund balance of $3.4 million. Available fund balance as a percent of expenditures and transfers out for the general fund was 21.08 percent, about a 3 percent increase there. Looking at your general fund, trending over the last few years, your revenues and expenditures have remained very comparable over the last three years. Revenues for 2018 totaled $144 million and expenditures totaled $140 million. I'll go into further detail on these later in the presentation. Of your total revenues, property taxes made up 61 percent. Restricted intergovernmental revenues, your federal and state grants were 16 percent. Other taxes and licenses, which include your sales tax, was at 15 percent, and then you had other revenues of 8 percent. Property taxes were at $87.6 million, about a 3 percent increase there. Other taxes and licenses, your sales taxes primarily, were $22.1 million, about a 5 percent increase there. Restricted intergovernmental revenues, we were federal and state grants, were at $23.1 million. This is a 25 percent decrease. This decrease is due to a statewide change regarding the childcare program. Those benefits are now directly paid from the state to the recipient. Those funds do not run through the county, so you will see a decrease here in your revenues and a corresponding decrease in your human services expenditures for that. Of your expenditures for the general fund, those totaled $140 million. Education made up 33 percent. Human services was at 28 percent. Public safety, 25 percent. And then other expenditures made up 14 percent. Public safety was at $35.4 million, about a 5 percent increase there. Human services was at $38.9 million, 16 percent decrease there. Again, this is due to the childcare benefits now being paid directly by the state. Education was at $45.8 million, a very slight change there, just about 2 percent change. And in fiscal year 18, the county implemented a required reporting standard, GASB 75, regarding your other post-employment benefits. This had an impact on your net position in governmental activities, business-type activities, and your enterprise fund. In previous years, that OPEB liability was required to be amortized over a 30-year period. Now that entire liability is required to be reported on the face of the financial statements. This concludes my presentation. Does anyone have any questions?
Any questions, comments? Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate you working with us.
Thank you.
And now we're going to our Employee Service Awards. Is that right?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, we skip around a little bit.
Madam Chairman, we have a motion to accept that report.
Okay. Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded. If we'll vote on this, please. This is the report, Mary, that was just given.
Aye.
We'll ask Florida Hardy to come assist us if she's, yeah, there she is. So this morning, as we do quarterly, we honor and recognize our workforce and their tenure. And we do this in the five-year increment blocks, going from five to this year 30 years. I think as of recent, we've even had a couple 40-year employees.
Can I just, some of those that are outside, I think, need to be in here. Will you hold your hand up if you've got a seat next to you? Come on in.
Are there seats available?
Keep your hands up so they can see. Come on in, folks. There's two right there. There's two on the front. Come on in. There's two right there.
So we have great participation this morning and I, we always like to point out that the long-term tenure of our workforce is really reflective of your commitment to serve the citizens of Pitt County in the various services you do provide, whether human service, public safety, economic development, and so forth. So we're going to start with the five-year category. As I call your name, if you come up, we will recognize your service. The employees will receive a certificate. And then for the new board members, they'll also receive either a PIN, recognizing the different categories, or the silver block box actually represents, in their 20th year employment with the county, they get to pick out a watch to, as a kid joked, to watch the next 10 years tick by until they can retire. And we have what half a dozen of those this morning to pass out. So again, we'll start with the five years. Anna Barnes with Sheriff's Office. If we will hold applause to the end of the category, then we'll recognize each group. April Biggs, Sheriff's Office. Did she hear this morning? Okay. D'Amica Bryant, Social Services. Rhonda Dawson, Social Services. Elaine Harrell, Elections Office. Brad Hufford, Development Commission. James B. Hufford. Jonathan Joyner, MIS, Management Information Services. Talisha Melton, Social Services. Talisha.
Talisha sounds good.
Matthew Tindell, Detention Center. Okay. And our last five-years to Sidney Wainwright, Sheriff's Office. All right, so that's the end of our five-years. Applause. All right, moving to 10-years, we have Nathaniel Bryan, Sheriff's Office. And next one is not here this morning, Betsy Byram, Detention Center. And our last 10-years could not attend, but is Randy Patterson with MIS. 15-year category, Joy Boykin, Social Services. Joy here this morning? Nikki Dolenti, Sheriff's Office. Eric Gooby, Planning Department. John Madigan III, Sheriff's Office. Madigan. Madigan. Yeah.
I bet you answered it.
Yes, pretty much. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
And our last 15-years is Joyce Whitaker, Social Services. All right, so in our 20-year category, Sandy Andrews, Human Resources, Personnel Department. Lisa Nichols, Register of Deeds. Monica Pons with MIS could not be here. Junice Stansel, Sheriff's Office.
Junius.
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 One, two, three, you got it. We got it. Congratulations. Thank you so much.
Congratulations. And our last 20-years could not attend is Elizabeth White with Social Services. The 25-years, we have two employees. Larry V. Head Jr. could not attend. He's with the Sheriff's Office. And then Mark Stokes with the Detention Center. All right, 25-years. Yeah, good one, okay, great. 30-years, we have three employees we'd like to recognize, and they are all from public health this morning. And our last 30-years to Teresa Wilson, again, Public Health. Understand you retired and coming back to get your 30-years.
No. Thank you so much.
Okay. And so did Neely Burney.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right. Now, round of applause.
We have a small reception in the back for all of our recipients, and anyone else that's here will enter through that door, and we'll kind of let the recipients, if you all will move on through. And everyone, join us.
board. Do we have any?
Madam Chairman, nobody has signed up unless there's somebody in the audience.
Anyone in the audience that didn't sign up who might like to speak. Okay, I see no one, so we'll move on to our items for report. The tax collection report.
Good morning.
Morning.
Good morning.
The November 2018 tax collection report on Pitt County fiscal year to date July 1 through November 30th, the combined collection rate is 68.32 percent. The rate one year ago was 72.21 percent. This is down 3.89 percent. This is a trend that we've seen, but the trend has corrected itself as far as December 31st. It is closer to the line from to last year. And we continue to use all remedies available through the North Carolina general statutes to to collect our tax levy.
Okay, thank you very much. Any questions, any comments, anything, a motion?
Motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion to approve in a second. We'll vote please for.
Aye.
Thank you, Mary. And next, Michelle Whaley, our Pitt County Animal Services.
Good morning. Thank you this morning for allowing me to come and speak before you. I'm excited to share that the Animal Services Advisory Board, and we have two members present today, Commissioner Tom Colson and Brittany Dale, who is out in the audience, have recommended several naming opportunities for our new building once the construction has been completed. In addition to this funding, we also launched a Path to Paws fundraiser where we were selling engraved bricks that will line our new courtyard. This enables citizens to leave a lasting legacy in honor or in memory of a pet or a person. To date, we have sold 193 bricks. The donation funding will be used to further enhance and grow programs within our department that help both people and pets. In the field of animal services and welfare, there is a statement that you cannot solve the pet overpopulation problem by outbuilding or adopting your way out of it. We are happy that 2018 saw the shelter's live release rate jump 14 percent to an overall 64.5 percent save rate. In order for Pitt County to reach the nationally acceptable save rate of at least 80 percent, we would need to continue to offer programs that currently exist, such as our Pet Responsibility Program for elementary school students, the altering of animals prior to going home with the adopter, the trap spay neuter release program for community cats. But we also need to look for ways to expand our programming, such as large adult dog foster programs, and ways to assist the public with affordable spay neuter options. We will also use the funds to enhance the quality of life for the dogs and cats housed at the shelters, such as adding on a catio room that allows the cats a place to get out of the cages and be able to act like a cat, where they can play, hide, stretch, scratch, et cetera. We hope this will increase our adoptions if the public can see how a cat would actually act in a home environment instead of in a cage. We also hope to add enrichment programs that will meet not only the physical needs of the animals, but also their emotional and social needs as well. Four of the naming rights have now been claimed and secured by donors. At this time, I would like to recognize these donors. Unfortunately, two of them could not be present today, but I would still like to acknowledge them. The first one is Patty and Ron Allison. They made a $5,000 donation, and Ron Allison also firmly served as chairman of the Animal Services Advisory Board. Next, Marilyn Thompson. Her company is Accounting and Business Solutions. They donated $10,000. I've had the pleasure of working with Marilyn the last 16 years, as she is one of the founders of the local nonprofit group Saving Graces for Felines. At this time, I'd like to ask Dr. Linda Kuhn to come up to be recognized. Dr. Kuhn owns East Carolina Veterinary Service, and she really kind of surprised me. She originally gave the county a check for $10,000, which had me doing, well, I can't really do a cartwheel, but I was very excited to receive it.
Your daughter can.
And then she followed it up just a few days later with a $5,000 contribution. She offered to her clients, if they bought a brick, she would match it. Her clients responded loud and in force, most of them bought more than one brick at a time, and so she gave us a total of now $15,000. So I thought it was very important for the board to see who is supporting PCAS and our vision and our programs of where we want to go. In closing, I just would like to ask you to support these naming opportunities, and if anybody has any specific questions.
Please give these up. Thank you, Michelle, for the job you're doing.
So come out and see us, as always.
Madam Chairman, we're hoping to get a motion to support their initiative.
I have a question.
Okay.
How much are the bricks each?
How much are the bricks?
Each?
Yes, they're $50 each.
Thank you.
Okay, and we'll need a motion to approve this. Second. Okay. We'll vote.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, next, we have Dave Peterson with the Trillium. He's our regional director. How are you, Dave?
Good morning. Thank you, Madam Chair, for having me, and welcome, Commissioners, to letting me speak to you today. Every year, this is our fourth year now with Trillium coming up here, doing an annual report. I first want to thank Commissioner Huggins, who's on our Regional Advisory Board, along with Deborah Herring, and Deborah just got appointed as vice chair to our Regional Advisory Board a couple of months ago. Thank you for your support throughout this year. I want to just start with who we are in the sense of trying to make sure that we're having ready access of mental health, developmental disabilities, and substance abuse services throughout our region. I'm going to touch on some coverage changes, some legislative changes, those are the ones I'll probably focus on the most, along with some funding changes, partnership changes, organizational changes, and then the last slide is some county data. So we are 26 counties, total population 1.4 million, about 205,000 Medicaid eligibles. We have over, we've served over 54,000 individuals. We have, we manage 500 provider agencies throughout. We have, we manage 500 provider agencies throughout those 26 counties and spent $355 million last year on services for people with mental health, developmental disabilities, and substance use. Our smallest county, as you may know, is Tarrell County with 3,800, and our largest is New Hanover County. We cover 12,000 square miles. And this is just a map of what we look like in the sense of our regions, northern region, and I'm the central regional director, so I cover Nash through Pitt all the way out to Dare County. And then we have the southern region, but the population difference between those is significant, with the southern region only having seven counties, but they have 715,000 people, and the northern region having 10 counties, and they're only about 200,000 people. We had some coverage changes. As you may know, two years ago, Nash County decided to separate from their previous managed care organization and join us. That was two years ago. Well, last year, Columbus County decided the same thing, to separate from their managed care organization and join us, which meant we went from 24 to 25 to now 26 counties. We do offer quite a few more options in Nash County and Columbus County now. Port Human Services or Health Services is going to have an office down in Columbus County, along with Integrated Family Services, who does a lot of our mobile crisis and a lot of other services. We've also been trying to offer a lot of requests for proposals to get services built up in Columbus County. So that was one of our big coverage changes. Let me talk a little bit about, or a lot about, the legislative changes that have hit us this year. For several years, they have been working towards what they're calling standard and tailored plans. We really need to make sure that folks are understanding what that means for local folks in every county. The best way to explain this is the state has sent the bills in and the waiver in for a new waiver, 1115 waiver. And what that means is, let's say today, Dave has a minor mental illness, and I just get once a month outpatient services. Okay? Those services that we currently pay through Trillium for Dave to go see outpatient services will get moved over to a private insurance company for Medicaid. Private insurance companies are going to be managing Medicaid dollars, okay? We are still going to be taking on the high-risk individuals. And so there's a timeline that the state has put into place for what they call the standard plan. And the standard plan, if you check on the division or Department of Health and Human Services website, the standard plan is for the private insurance companies to take those responsibilities over from us. All right? And that is supposed to be implemented through this process. The applications came in to the state, and they have people in a back room reviewing these applications. And I'll say, when we talk about applications, you know the printer boxes that you get next to your printer of just paper? One application was 20 boxes. Okay? That's how big these applications are, coming in from the private insurance companies to take over this responsibility. So here's the timeframe. In February, we will see who our partner is going to be, all right? Because we, Trillium, and the other managed care organizations are going to have to partner with that private insurance company, because they're going to be managing the lower-risk individuals, and we're going to be managing the higher-risk individuals. But the state right now is determining who's going to be going back and forth between the high-risk and the low-risk individual. So let's just say Dave had just getting outpatient services, but then Dave has a really bad month, and I get hospitalized in a psychiatric hospital. Okay? That being said, does Dave need a higher level of care? Does Dave then go over to the standard plan, from the standard plan over to the tailored plan? And a tailored plan manages the higher-risk individuals. So right now, the state is trying to determine who fits into the higher tailored plan and who should stay in the standard plan. All right? So they are working on that criteria as we speak. All right? This whole process is supposed to be cost neutral, all right? But I will say, with that being said, we've had to try to partner with some other managed care organizations, which has been Alliance Behavioral Health in the central part of the state, and Vaya in the western part of the state. That helps us, because what we're going to have to do is we're going to have to put in an application, just like the private insurance companies did for the standard plan, we're going to have to put an application in for the tailored plan. I would bet my life savings on, well, I'd bet a lot more than that, too, on that we will get the application approved for making sure that we manage the tailored plan. But we are going to be having to apply for that in order for us to continue managing the Medicaid dollars.
Dave, who will you be competing against for that tailored?
So in the statute, it says the state can choose five to seven managed care organizations, and currently, there are seven. Okay? So our other people, our other managed care organizations in the state, all right, like Vaya and Alliance and East Point and Partners, those are some other managed care organizations. So those who we'd be competing, and the good thing is, they are seeing that we're partnering with two of the other managed care organizations, not merging, just partnering with them. We hope that the three of us, because we represent then 52 counties in the state, that we get that. Okay? So some of the changes in the organization then you may be seeing is that the state has really said we need to be focusing on the whole person. Now, one of the differences in what we're doing now, and for folks that have been around a while, there was two class action lawsuits in the 80s and 90s, the Thomas S. and the William lawsuits. And we were treating the whole person. All right? We had case managers that not only dealt with the mental health issues of individuals, but they also made sure that they went to their physical health appointments. That's what the state has then said you're going to be doing now as a managed care organization, is also managing the physical side of the house. So if you take a look at our population that we're going to be serving, our population that we're going to be serving is going to go down, because the private insurance companies are going to be managing those low-risk individuals. But at the same time, we're not only going to be managing the mental health services, we're going to be managing the physical health services of individuals. So our responsibilities for one person is going to go way up and take more time and energy and folks to make sure that we're doing that. So we are focusing on a lot of the social determinants of health. We want to make sure that we have staff to oversee those social determinants of health. We're going to be working, and we have in years past on several different projects, but we will be working with our DSS and Health Department partners on this. And part of that, dealing with the whole person, we are in the process of hiring some nurses, because we need to make sure that they are covering the health side of the I wanted to touch just briefly on the opioid issue. We did get some federal money, and it's called the Cures Funding, and we spent $3 million, a little over $3 million last year. That came from the federal government and served 1,880 individuals. A lot of counties, and Pitt County does have a good coalition that's dealing with the substance abuse arena, and a lot of counties are applying for federal grants around the opioid issue. Not on your presentation, but I know that it has had a great impact. A little bit more east, but I know it's impacted Pitt County, is what we've done around the hurricane. And so we've had a lot of different internal and external operation projects, and we've had 4,000 care packages to shelters, 1,500 comfort kits, our partners of other MCOs. Both, two of them delivered 18-wheel full trucks of goods that we distribute to our members. And so Vaya has done that, and also Cardinal has done that, too. We had donations to support backpacks for kids in the eastern part of the state that, for helping them get, you know, any of their necessities, like hygiene and so on. So that was one of the big projects that, you know, obviously, we were all impacted by. And then lastly, Pitt County numbers. So every year, I give you the total numbers of individuals served in Pitt County, and it was 7,744. And this is broken down into the three disability groups that we serve. And so 6,201 for mental health, primary diagnosis of mental health, 1,678 with a primary diagnosis of substance abuse, and 1,021 with those with intellectual and developmental disabilities. Now, next year, when I present to you, this chart will probably look totally different, because we're also going to be covering the health side, you know, the physical health side. So it's going to be a lot different, not only dealing with the three disability groups, but also what we're going to be dealing with in the sense of the health services. Did I cut my time good?
You did fine.
Okay.
That's a lot to digest.
Yeah.
And a lot of changes coming for you all, and there's no opportunity for the changes not to go forward. So I know you've got your job cut out for you.
Yes, and I would be happy to meet with anybody, any one of you individually, because this will impact how we operate in the long run, and then how we're going to be partnering with the insurance companies. So I'd be happy to do that.
Beth.
Okay, Don?
Not a question, but a concern. I don't know how you're going to do it all without sacrificing, I'm going to say, the clients to some degree. I'm afraid that this is going to lead to longer wait times and everything else, not by any fault of yours, but because, I'm going to say, legislation out of Raleigh.
I understand.
That's rhetorical. You don't necessarily need to answer that.
Thank you.
Coming back down from Raleigh again, so, okay? Anyone else?
Yeah. Next to the last slide, the 1,880 people who were served, what is that for opioids? What does that figure mean when you are serving 1,880 people?
So with the Cures dollars that we got from the feds, that $3 million, that means they got into some type of opioid treatment, medication-assisted treatment is one of them. There's a variety of different medication services for folks and other behavioral health services for folks that are on opioids. And it has to be their primary diagnosis of opioid abuse.
Thank you. Scott had something he wanted to say.
Yes, I just wanted to just make a comment for the new board members, a historical comment. About 10 years ago, Pitt County actually ran a mental health program in the, what is now the Human Services Center across Office Park north of the river, and the General Assembly required us to divest or privatize it. And now we have Trillium Health as an LME, which is a local management entity, MCO, a managed care organization, that's a terminology that runs those services, and that I'm just kind of putting that perspective as to, we actually had the services in-house, but years ago, like 10 years or more.
Yeah, 2001, that started, that whole process started. And so a lot of changes since then, and there's going to be, looks like, in the next two years. And what I didn't touch on was, I gave you the timeline for the standard plan. Our tailored plan timeframe is supposed to be implemented by 2022. Okay? So once they point out who the primary insurance companies are going to be, then we have to partner with them, then we have to send in, you know, our application to be one of those agencies.
And this happened all over the state of North Carolina, and because of the facilities and the programs we had in place in Pitt County, I think that's why we, your offices are here.
Yes.
But we have had the smaller counties, surrounding counties, and some that are not small, and some that had large programs also.
Yes.
To join in with us. So that's the two extra ones we've gotten in there. It's 26.
Yes.
You say. So, and the government is in our mess again. Anyway, thank you so much.
You're welcome.
And he means it when he says, if you want to talk with him, just let him know.
Be happy to do that. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Yep.
And Brian? Our monthly financial report.
Good morning again. You have in front of you the monthly financial report ending on November 30th. At that point in time, that's 41.67 percent of our fiscal year. At the end of November, we had collected in the general fund 47.8 percent and had only spent 40.2 percent. Both of those numbers are slightly lower than they were at this point last year. However, the difference between our revenues to expenditures is actually better this year than it was at this point last year. So if you have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer.
Any questions?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, let's vote. Thank you, Brian. And next, I'll just acknowledge our new chairman appointments. I have contacted everyone, and everyone is willing to serve, and these are committees and organizations that serve the whole county, and we usually have a commissioner serving on each one of those boards. Some of them are voting memberships and some are non-voting. But thank you all for your willingness to serve on those. And our manager's report, Mr. Elliott.
Thank you, Madam Chairman. Just a couple things to note. Next meeting dates in the month of February. You'll be to a normal meeting schedule, the first and third Monday, February 4th and February 18th, 9:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m. respectfully. Remind you of the CIP workshop on January 28th. And please note the time change. We have pushed this back to begin at 8:00 rather than 8:30. Also remind you of the Legislative Breakfast with the Pitt County Legislative Delegation. That'll be on Friday, January 18th at 8:00 a.m., and that'll be at The Barn at 400 St. Andrews here in Greenville. Want to note the appointment, there'll be effective tomorrow, of an interim administrative health director with the retiring of Dr. Morrow. Amy Haddam is going to be the interim administrative health director, while the Board of Health is in the process of recruiting and interviewing, and hopefully soon to be appointing at some point in future, a new health director for Pitt County. Next item, I just put this on the agenda, calling it local impacts of the partial federal government shutdown. There's been a, media has contacted us a little bit on this to see what effect a federal government shutdown is having on us in the near term. It's little to none through the month of January, February. The appropriations have already been made in terms of within health and DSS. If we go beyond those two points in time, then yes, there could be some impacts to the funding as it comes, as it's passed from the federal government to the state government, and then down to the local government. That would apply to food stamps as well. I know Commissioner Perkins-Williams had a concern about the public being aware of that. Talking to our DSS Director, Jan Elliott, she's saying that, again, the food stamps are probably good through the end of February, and she can further elaborate on that in her presentation if she feels like she needs to. So in the near term, we're good. Physicians that are, that we house both within health and DSS and otherwise are funded, and we have no issue of furloughing our employees or anything like that in the near future. Now, if you get to a long-term situation with this, that might be another conversation, but we'll have to monitor this as the shutdown continues, and hopefully will be resolved in the somewhat near future.
Okay. The Sog Parkway.
Yeah, Sog Parkway is the last item. Just wanted to let the board know that, as you're aware, we worked with the Development Commission, the Committee 100, for the funding of the repaving of a portion of Sog Parkway in the Integrating Corporate Park that was not under NCDOT state maintenance, and that project is complete, and now the NCDOT Board of Transportation has adopted that road and put it under the state road maintenance, and the project is complete. paving is complete, and the... Coal's paving is complete, and the takeover of the state is complete, so we've achieved all our objectives.
Good.
That's all I have.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion for the items for consent.
So, move.
Second.
Okay, let's vote, please. Next, we have Teresa Bell. Ball, excuse me, I'm sorry. I knew better. Talking to us about the Veterans Experience Action Center. How are you this morning?
I am doing fine. Good morning, everyone. Thank you. The U.S. Department of Veteran Affairs is funded through September 30th, so there's no danger of problems there. So, veterans will continue receiving their checks. Healthcare center will continue working as normal. So, they're funded through September 30th. The Winston-Salem Regional Office holds four Veteran Experience Action Centers every year, normally two in the east, two in the west. This is a three-day event where the Department of Veteran Affairs sends down the actual decision-makers, the raiders, that make decisions on veterans' claims. They go into the local community. And with the support of that local community, then they open that up to veterans. So, veterans can come in when they have a problem with their case. Maybe a case has kind of got stuck, and they just can't get over it. So, they can come in and the veteran can sit down and talk face-to-face with their evidence to the person who's going to make the decision on their case. Veterans can also come in and file original claims. Normally, there's 20 to 25 federal employees that come, raiders. We reach out to other county service officers like myself. There's usually 10 to 15 of those that come in from other regions, and we are there to assist the veterans. The ones that have been held in the past, they usually average from 350 to 400 veterans per day of the three days. So, it's a big event. We normally solicit donations of food, beverages, for refreshments from local people to, so the veterans can have refreshments and lunch and breakfast while they're there. I have contacted the free, the dental van, the Mission Baptist van, and they are going to be available, if we can do this, for two of our days. I also have a mental health van that's going to be there all three days. And I would like to also contact American Red Cross and possibly have a blood drive from the veterans who are waiting for service. They have time, so they can do donation of blood. Not only are they receiving, but they'll be giving. And so, this is a big event. The last event that was held was in Dunn last year, and it pulled in veterans from 14 states. So, states.
Wow.
They were people that flew in from Texas and Oregon even. And of course, with it Dunn being on Highway 95, there were a lot of the east coast veterans, Florida, Georgia, South Carolina, Virginia, Maryland, right on up and down the east coast. And we're not far off of Highway 95, so I would suspect that we would pull in the same amount. So, you're talking a lot about a economic boost to the region. These people will be coming in, staying a couple nights in our hotels, shopping, and visiting our restaurants while they're here in town. So, I would really like to proceed with this. I've done just a little bit of planning, just enough to get things tested. The VA is very much looking forward to doing this. They have penciled in very strongly May 15th through 17th, pending upon your approval.
I have a question. Yes, Mary.
Beth, I read this, this information. I'm curious as to how many people from Pitt County has shown up in the past? And I also, I am in favor of the bringing the event to Pitt County, of course. But I would like to know how many people in Pitt County take advantage of this survey.
The ones that I have visited in the past, the people that I know from Pitt County that were there the days that I was there, there's usually about 10 people from Pitt County who have driven to Jacksonville, Sampson County, Clinton, Dunn, that have visited these events. Now, there may have been some there that I didn't know about.
We've never done one of these before, though.
We've never done one in Pitt County.
But I will say that I know of two churches that do a Veterans Day event and similar to this, but on a very smaller basis. There are doctors, there are clothing, there's nurses, there's blood, the blood drive people. And I know of one church that just did it a couple of months ago, and they had over 195 veterans to come. And they usually serve a light lunch, and it's, I mean, it's, there's over 50 kind of stations there. So, anyway, any questions?
Yeah, Teresa. Thank you so much for coming. This is obviously a really, really important initiative, and, and I look forward to supporting. I wondered, what, what plans do you have in place to outreach and publicize the event so that we can maximize the amount of veterans that we meet, that, that we can meet face-to-face here in Pitt County?
Keeping in mind that we're in the very, very early stages of planning. But historically, what there are is TV, newspaper, social media, billboards. And the VA also does publicize this. The U.S. Department of Veteran Affairs.
And just to clarify, are you going to be publicizing mainly in east North Carolina, or are you going to be going up and down the 95 corridor, so we're reaching into Tidewater and South Carolina?
I will be concentrating in eastern North Carolina. The U.S. Department of Veteran Affairs will be more the ones that will do the billboard out on Highway 95 to catch the traffic and to get it out. And this word spread, it spreads word of mouth, because in the veteran community, when you let a few veterans know something, it's, it goes.
Absolutely.
Okay, anybody else?
Yes.
Yes.
I want to thank you, Teresa, that, that, I, I think the veterans has certainly done a tremendous job in Pitt County and eastern North Carolina, and this is a good way to showcase that.
Yes.
Your, your, your efforts in, in promoting that is certainly appreciated, and so, I want to, want to applaud you for doing that.
I've been to several as a county service officer and assisting, and it is a big event. It's a big production.
Yeah.
And the veterans are very appreciative of these.
Okay, Anne?
Okay. I also want to thank you for, for heading this up. And as Mary is concerned about veterans in Pitt County, I think this, this will be an opportunity for the veterans here in Pitt County, whereas they did not drive that distance before. So, I think this will, will be a great service to them. Also, I see that you have the Congressman's support, and I'm sure that's in both Jones' and, and both Butterfield's office. And I know they have veterans representatives in their offices. So, this will be, I'm sure they will be helping to, to reach veterans and then encourage them to come to this event and have that face-to-face contact. So, I, I totally support this. I think it's great.
I am reaching out. I don't quite have the Congressman's support yet, but I am reaching out to them and have made contact. And I see no reason why that will not come. It's come in the past.
You get that support, that will be great. They, they could really advocate for it.
Yes, they can.
Okay, Scott had something he'd like to share.
Yes, can you just quickly tell us how many veterans reside in Pitt County and how much economic impact that is on our county, if you have that off the top of your head?
There's just shy of 12,000 veterans living in Pitt County.
That's amazing.
And in the last fiscal year where I had the numbers, there was like 75 million paid into Pitt County, non-taxable dollars paid into Pitt County from the VA. So, that's a lot of sales tax revenue.
Yes.
Okay, you've read this and you've heard this. Is there a motion to support it with the money?
I like the move that we, that allows this lady to proceed with this effort.
Okay, thank you, Mary.
Madam Chairman, just to clarify, this will come from the contingency fund?
And it's already there. So, it's not extra budgeted money. Like, if you'll vote, please. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, and next, Jan Elliott. Hi, Jan.
This item has a misspelling on the printed agenda. Instead of a mortification agreement, it's a modification agreement.
Yeah, I try not to be mortified.
It may be mortified. Don't mortify us, please.
And, and I want to make a couple of comments about what Dave said. This Medicaid transformation is going to impact most, most of county government in many different ways. Obviously, we will be impacted. And for those of you who are interested, on January the 22nd, we have Deborah Farrington with the State Division of Medical Assistance. They have a new name, but it's, it'll take me a while to learn it. Will be here in Pitt County, meeting with board members from, DSS board members from throughout the region. And so, if any of you all are interested, it's at 9:30. It's at the Cooperative Extension Office in their, in the, the Mark Auditorium. And she was going to speak about 30 minutes or so, just on the transformation and what that's going to look like. So, you all are certainly welcome to attend if anybody wants to, to come. Okay, about what I'm here to talk about is the memorandum of understanding. And this is the memorandum of understanding that those of you who were here back last year heard about. We've got so many new folks. Mr. Elliott and I talked about the fact that perhaps it'd be good to do a quick run-through of what was discussed before, as well as talking about what has changed. And this is an agreement between North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services and Pitt County. We did change, share some of these changes with our board, our DSS board at the December meeting, just as an FYI. So, session law 2017-41 requires an annual written agreement for all programs except for Medicaid. Medicaid has their own law, their own penalties, their own everything, but this is very similar. It is, this particular session law set up a social services work group to see about how social services is organized, to help us look at regionalization. It also authorized a study, a $3 million study of social services in North Carolina, how that's organized, a child welfare study. It's established a child well-being transformation council. It has established the ability for counties to regionalize voluntarily if they want to. And it did a lot of child welfare law changes. So, this was a huge, huge bill that came about in that session law. So, it, it requires counties to meet performance standards, and, you know, we're all used to meeting performance standards, but this is set up a little differently. And it requires counties and the state to each have certain administrative responsibilities. So, initially, when we were, when this was going forward, there were a lot of multiple drafts. Lots of folks had the opportunity to have input. Counties got lots of drafts to look at. I know commissioners, county managers, DSS directors, lots of folks gave feedback. And that was ultimately what was incorporated into the final document. However, we were supposed to start January 1 with the penalty phase, the charge backs, all that was supposed to be implemented January 1. But a little thing called Florence intervened, and it impacted 40-some counties in North Carolina. And there's still some issues with the data reliability. So, through the process of thinking through that, the state decided to amend this particular year's MOU. They'll have to be one done every year. This year's MOU to say that we will not be impacted by any of the penalty pieces until July 1, when there will be a new MOU. So, we're having a longer grace period, so to speak, while they work out some of the data issues and, and those kinds of things. So, it changes the effective date of the penalties. It changes who the notices go to at the state level. There was a retirement, so they, they had to change the MOU for that. They reframed some of the performance standards and eliminated at least one in foster care. And there's some minor language changes throughout. You all, I believe, were given the, in your packet, the redlined copy, so you could see what the original one was and where the changes occurred. So, I'm going to just hit highlights. The agreement is between DHHS and the county of Pitt. It's not between DHHS and DSS in Pitt County. It's effective from July 1, 2018, to June 30, 2019, and then a new memorandum will be brought before you to be approved. The performance remedies are corrective actions, withholding of federal and state dollars, and that's something that was in the original one, and that's a whole new ballgame for counties, because they've never done that before. The takeover of a specific program, if you are failing in that particular area, the state could literally come in and take over the program. The county would still be financially responsible. And DHHS, DHHS will not initiate the remedies till July 1, 2019, which is, which is one of the changes, instead of January 1. DHHS's responsibilities are to provide supervision, program monitoring, and technical assistance. It's to provide leadership and coordination for strategies addressing system-level barriers. There's staff training and workforce development included on their side. Compliance monitoring is to be done. Data has to be accurate, and they have acknowledged that that's their responsibility. Communication regarding law, rule, or policy changes has to come to us, and there has to be inter-agency cooperation. And they are responsible for making sure that happens at the Raleigh level. If y'all think about it, DHHS has lots of different departments. At least four of those departments directly impact the Department of Social Services at a county level. Additionally, there are other divisions and departments within state government, such as emergency management, that impact DSS. So, that's some of that cooperative piece that has to happen. And y'all do have a, a copy of the handout in front of you, by the way. So, Pitt County's responsibilities are to maintain an adequate number of trained staff, and I like the word adequate number, and trained. We have to comply with the laws, rules, regulations, and policies. We have to maintain and submit our side of the data to make sure it's accurate. We have to maintain timely communication with, within, the county has to maintain timely communication with DSS. So, for example, if you're going to cut our budget or do some things that could impact us, we need timely notification of that. We have to maintain inter-agency cooperation related to disaster management. We are the shelter people. And we maintain data security. So, if we, we have information at this level that we put into state systems, we have to make sure our side of it is secure. So, those are the Pitt County responsibilities. There are now 26 performance measures. They are tracked monthly and reported monthly, although currently, we at Pitt DSS nor anywhere across the state do we have access to all of that data directly ourselves. The state has to provide some of that data to us. And the last data we had access to was September's data. That work is ongoing. They are working on making reports more available, and again, the data accuracy piece. So, that's changing. Non-compliance continues to be defined as three consecutive months or five out of 12 months. Failure to comply with the requirement of the MOU could trigger this, and there is always an opportunity to dispute the decision. So, those were, most of that pretty much stayed as it was. The performance measures, 17 of these performance measures, instead of being exact performance measures based on the federal or state requirements, they will look at growth performance measures. So, if we are at 25% now and need to be at 40%, then they're going to give us an incremental growth measure, thinking that you can't jump from point A to point B overnight in some situations. Nine of the performance measures are performance measures we've been measured on for a long time. They're static, and, and there won't be any growth measure assigned there. There are at least five performance measures that have been updated to align with federal benchmarks, and, and that was a change. For example, if it was, the, the state had put in 9%, but the federal benchmark is 9.1, they literally changed it to 9.1. There were minimal changes in that situation. And again, one performance measure was eliminated. The corrective action is that the DSS and the county will work to develop an improvement plan if we have to go into corrective action. So, you all through the manager will be involved in that. A copy of the plan will be sent to the DSS board. There will be continued non-compliance. If there's continued non-compliance, we'll have to do a new plan. The plan cannot exceed at that point any more than 12 months. And if we're not making progress at that point, then the other corrective actions may come into play. The plan itself would contain information about continuous review by all parties, including the Social Services Board. And a copy of that plan would go to the county manager, Ms. Ward, the commission chair, and the DSS board chair, so that everybody would be involved, informed, knowledgeable about what's going on. If there is continued failure, then as I said earlier, there could be withholding of federal or state dollars. The state DHHS folks have some question about whether they have the legal authorities to do that, and so, they're exploring that. And every- And everyone acknowledges that withholding dollars does not help you get better when you're having a financial issue to begin with, generally, because it's a staffing issue. The secretary, as I said, could assume control of the service delivery area, and the county retains all financial responsibility if the secretary does come in and take over. So that has happened in other situations. They've had that authority in child welfare and in Medicaid for some period of time. And sometimes it is a staffing or a resources issue, so the secretary has the authority to come in and make those kinds of things happen, and the county would have the responsibility for funding that. And I say all that, but I also need to say, the federal government has a significant amount of money in these programs, and so you would get significant reimbursement for the bulk of any type of increased staffing. Areas that the counties have for concern, and those were the original areas of concern, and they really haven't changed a whole lot. The state has no performance measures that they have to meet. The county does not control all of the needed resources. You know, I can't control the days the courts allow us to come in and do foster care court, do child welfare court, do child support court, whatever. Mental health, you've heard Dave talk today. We rely on them a lot, and I don't have control over the services and access to those services. And there are lots of other kinds of folks that we might be impacted by. Again, I said the reports are still being developed and validated, and that's been a concern of the directors all along. We also noted that a low number in a denominator can result in one case, a case causing you to be out of compliance. It's not as big an issue in Pitt County, although it can happen. But if you look at Terrell County, and they have one case out of three, they've already failed. There's just no way they can pass, and that's going to be a big issue for those smaller counties. Again, it can happen in Pitt, but not as often. And then there are certainly questions ongoing about the process and the triggers, because we are still all learning as we go. So that's my quick run-through. Tried to talk fast, some of it you've heard before, of what this is. The changes are very minimal. And so what we are asking, certainly I'll take any questions, but what we're asking is that the Board authorize the manager to sign and return the memorandum to the state. So I'll stop.
This is information that we have heard before, but thank you for giving it for our newer members to the Board. Unless there are any questions, I would entertain a motion.
I would like to make the motion that we approve the manager's signing.
Well, I do have a question, Madam Chair.
Okay, let's get the motion in a second, then we can discuss. That'll be fine. Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, go right ahead.
Okay.
Good morning, Jan. You mentioned that there's a data reliability problem. I was wondering how that's specific to Pitt County. What type of data reliability issues are we seeing?
It's data reliability statewide. A part of it is that the computer systems that we have right now, as it relates to a lot of the services programs, are pretty much nonexistent or very limited. I know, and we're in the process of NCFAST implementation. I know with Medicaid, it took about three years, once we implemented NCFAST, for us to get reliable data out of that. So that is one of the concerns. And some of these reports have not been generated to look at the same kinds of things we're looking at now. So we've got to make sure that, and part of it is, we've got to key it in correctly. If it's data that we are submitting, you know, if it's a form that says, "We put this child in care on this date," and then we turn around three months later and said, "We went to court and established this," we've got to put things in timely ourselves. So there are lots of different pieces of the data reliability, and we will continue to argue that point.
And how are we doing in Pitt County with doing our part on making sure that data entries happen in the right way?
We're hoping we're doing really well. I do know we had a couple of months there when we were down to half of the staff in our APS section, and so putting data into the system was not as important to them as getting out and seeing the folks that needed to be seen. And so it took us a month or two to catch that up. So clearly, the data reliability for that month was nonexistent. So, but what I can tell you is that we had two, in the September month, we had two areas, both of them in adult services, that we had no data for. We did meet 11 of the state recommended points, and statewide, there were only 13 average people, I mean, 13 quality indicators that were met statewide. So Pitt is not that different from the rest of the folks. Had we gotten our stuff in, we probably would have been at 13 also. And I can tell you that we exceeded or met statewide averages in 14 of the performance indicators. So statewide, we've got a lot of work to do to get all counties up to meet the performance indicators. It's going to be a long process.
Anyone else? Okay, we have a motion and a second. We'll vote, please.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you all, and come visit. Come visit.
Thank you. Okay, our sheriff, Paula Dent, if you'll come forward, please.
Good morning, commissioners.
Good morning.
This is the first opportunity for me, a sheriff, to come before you all. I'm sure it is the first of many, as I plan to be very engaged in this process. Bring you good news, and I bring you not-so-good news. The good news is the county is still standing. Our officers are out still patrolling, and we are still here. The not-so-good news is that I am coming before you today requesting $21,000 from the contingency fund for additional rent expenses. Due to the building being sold, building rent at our Ninth Street Patrol Office increased to $2,500 per month from $1,200 a month at the expiration of our previous contract. This was known during the budget preparation. However, it is believed that our patrol division at that time would be moving to Hope Station, a county-owned building. This transfer has not occurred, causing expenses above the budgeted expectation. So therefore, I would be asking for that amount of money to carry us through.
Scott, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
I won't put you on the spot, but we talked about this six months, eight months, nine months, whatever ago. When did we find out that Hope Station was going to fall through? Was that just recent?
No, we actually have known that there's some restrictive covenants on the property we're trying to acquire behind it that would not allow us to use that for parking. I think we, between me and the sheriff's office, I didn't realize that we didn't budget this for the entire year. So, I mean, I think that's why she's before you. I thought we had budgeted some amount, but obviously, we only budgeted the first six months, because I did think we were moving into Hope Station.
Well, I guess my bigger point is, is that if we knew this a long time ago, why didn't we take action before now? Again, that's more of a rhetorical question. Maybe we can learn from that in the future.
And we're also looking for alternative space that even, when we have the CIP workshop, we're going to talk about the Law Enforcement Center, which if that is approved and we can move forward on that, eventually, that's going to solve a lot of these space and lease issues for the sheriff to have all that in one location. But in the meantime, if we can find something a little more cost-effective, and if the sheriff agrees, another location where we're not paying quite so much. The reason we're paying only $1,000, the reason we were paying $1,200 a month is 20, 25 years ago, when we first leased that property from Don Edwards, the county went in there and outfitted that for the dropped ceilings, the walls, the carpet, HBAC, and he kept the rent very low for that reason. But as the sheriff mentioned, it is recently sold, and the new owner has decided, and again, we're on a month-to-month lease, so we can, technically, I think we have to give a 60-day notice to get out of it. But if we can find something more cost-effective, and if the sheriff agrees, we'll bring that back for your consideration.
And I think that's important, that the commissioners understand that, that we're going to be actively looking for that to happen, so this may not go on for a whole year. But anybody else?
Just one question. This restricted covenant, Scott, is there anything that can be done legally to?
I've worked with the county attorney, and she's talked to the school of government. Part of the problem is, the, behind Hope Station is a residential neighborhood. There was a vacant lot there. That vacant lot was the one we were trying to, were looking at potentially acquiring, but it restricts it only to residential-type uses, and this is a office institutional use. And we would have to get every single property owner, deed holder in that subdivision to sign off to say that they would allow this use to go on there. And a lot of those houses are probably rented, so we don't, you know, could have out-of-state property owners. We've talked about this extensively in-house, and do not feel it's realistic that we would be able to get out of 40 or 50 property owners 100% sign off. And if we acquire the property and start using it for that purpose without that sign off, and one property owner objects, then we could be, Janice, what would be the term?
Be in violation of the restrictive covenants for that subdivision.
And then we would have to be forced not to be able to use that lot for that. We would improve it for parking and paving and landscaping, and then we could be forced to leave it, per se, and yet have bought and owned it.
I certainly support to move forward with this and support our sheriff. However, I think that you mentioned that you're still looking in terms of some more space availability that the sheriff department can certainly move into. But in the meantime, I think we need to move forward with this to get them a place to be involved in in our community. That place was ideal, I think, community area because of the visibility and the location. But being that it's May, I think we need to move forward and support this request.
Okay.
Could that be the motion?
That's the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, please vote, or not in favor.
Aye.
Thank you.
I support.
Okay, thank you very much. And now we have James Rhodes. This is our RPO.
Yes, ma'am. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board. We have an amended MOU as well, probably not as extensive as your one you dealt with with DSS, but nonetheless, it is important to Pitt County. This Rural Planning Organization is the group that helps with setting transportation priorities for the more rural parts of Pitt County. So what does that mean? So we'll need to go through a little geographic overview here to show you what is included in the RPO, the Rural Planning Organization, versus that of the MPO, which is the Greenville Urban Area Metropolitan Planning Organization. So the RPO covers three counties, that being Martin, Beaufort, and Pitt, excluding the area that's included in the MPO. So you can see, there's a lighter shaded area here within the MPO boundary. Certainly, that covers greater Greenville and a few other areas. I'll show you another map in a minute. But the areas in the more rural portions of the county, pretty much around the fringe, those areas are included in the RPO. Those municipalities that are located in those, in that area, that would be six different municipalities, including Bothell, as an example, would also have the opportunity to serve as a member of the RPO. The MPO, a little bit blown-up map here for Pitt County, that includes greater Greenville, the Village of Simpson, Aiden, and Winterville, and also portions of unincorporated Pitt County. So today, and included in your package is the amended MOU for the RPO, and it will basically help establish better the rules and roles and responsibilities of the group. Commissioner Coulson has served as our member for quite a while now. Didn't get your list, Madam Chair. I'm not, he's on for next term, too.
Yes.
Okay. So with that, we're also looking at an alternate. Madam Chair, didn't get your list?
Taken care of.
Commissioner Albright, welcome aboard. So I'll be looking to this end.
James.
Yes.
You have to go through the ethics training, the TAC. Even though you'll be an alternate, you still have to go through the ethics training. And they have been so kind to us that you can no longer do it online, as I understand it. You have to get the form, fill it out. I guess they didn't have enough to do pushing paper up for Raleigh. But if you need any help on that, let me know, and I'll help you through it.
Thank you, Tom.
So with that, and one of the main purposes for the amendment that were included in your package is to ensure that we get forms at our meetings. These are very important meetings, and in so doing, there's also some language in there now that tells if you don't attend a certain number of meetings, you may be no longer a voting member. So again, we have our standing member, we have an alternate, so hopefully, Pitt County will be well-represented. And with that, Madam Chair, we're looking for a motion for approval.
Okay. Do I hear a motion for approval?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
The unincorporated area of Pitt County, does that include areas like Stokes and Pac Tola?
It does.
And Belleville?
All three, yes.
That's what, that was my question. Thank you. And I vote yes.
Okay, thank you. And if we'll vote now, please?
We need a second.
Oh, a second. I thought we had one, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Also, flowing into the next item, Hurricane Florence Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, also known locally as our buyout program. Remember, at your December meeting, staff was here to give you an idea of where we were moving along and trying to solicit applications from people that actually experienced damage during Hurricane Florence in flood-prone areas. And in so doing, I would think we were fairly successful in getting folks to come out. We had two sessions, one at the Agricultural Center on December the 11th, and then another one also at the Griffin Train Depot on December the 12th. And you may well know, most of you, that most of the damage, structural damage here in Pitt County was in the very southern tip of the county, in the Griffin area. So all total, we had about 30 property owners to come in, consider the application process. I would say at least two-thirds of those have now submitted applications, and we're now closing in toward our application deadline on Friday of this week. And again, a couple of people are still considering applying for this. And with that, we need to move forward in setting our priorities. That was included in your package, and what that helps us do is kind of rank these projects, these particular properties. And we'll then be sending in a letter of intent or interest to North Carolina Emergency Management at the beginning of February, February 8, to be exact. So our priorities, these are straight from NCEM, and we feel like it would be in our best interest to follow suit on these. And you can see priorities 1 through 6. We do not have any in priority, number 1. We do not have any substantially damaged properties. However, there are a few with in priority 2. And the bulk certainly will be covered either in 2, and certainly probably 3 also. So we feel like we'll have several that will be highly ranked. And with that, Madam Chair, we have two motions for your consideration, adopting the priorities and also authorizing staff to move forward with submitting this letter of interest.
I'd like to support with the motion.
Okay, we have a motion. Would you second it, Mary?
I second.
Okay. We will vote now, please, on the motion.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rhodes. Okay, and Tim?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Here for you, here in front of you this morning, asking for approval on a capital improvement project. This is the tax assessor roof. This was actually put in the CIP this year, and about $120,000 was identified for this project. The project was bid recently, and four contractors were interested in the project. Two bids were received, two were non-responsive. The low bidder was Curtis Construction, who has actually done work for the county here the last couple of years on a other roof, on a different roof. Their bid was $110,800. I'd like to ask for approval of that contract, along with a 5% contingency, just in case we run into any issues as the project moves on. That total would be $5,540, for a total of $116,340. That total would be $5,540, for a total of $116,340. I'd ask for authorization for the county manager to execute that contract with Curtis Construction.
So move.
We have a motion, second, and a second. All in favor, let's vote.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Corleone, thank you, Mary. Okay, our request for the North State Medical Transport request.
Good morning, Madam Chair, and commissioners. For those who don't know me, I'm Jim MacArthur, Deputy Director of Emergency Management, serving EMS role primarily. Here to talk to you this morning, we had a request from North State Medical Transport. They're based out of Wake County, Raleigh area, to apply for a franchise here in Pitt County. They applied last fall, right before Hurricane Florence. That was delayed, obviously, a little bit. Went before the EMS Oversight Committee to discuss that. Them coming in, having a shop here in Pitt County, that was unanimously approved at the November EMS Oversight Committee meeting. North State would be our seventh ambulance franchise in Pitt County. If you've seen Care First, MedX, Coastal Transport, White Oak Transport, Roanoke Medical Transport, and Atlas Medical Transportation, they all currently serve in Pitt County, and we don't really have any issues with those that we know of. I'm not really qualified to know what the number of the franchises is, you know, as to whether or not there's an opportunity for business here. But Carly Coward, who serves as the Business Director for North State Transport, is here. If you do have any questions for them, she's been following the application through the process and working with us. They have done everything we've asked them to do. Their application has met all of our requirements. The only thing they have not done is pending approval of their franchise, they would need to have a storefront operation here in the county. We've been allowing the applicants for franchises to not do that immediately, because there's costs associated with that, and if they were not approved for some reason, then they would not be invested there. But assuming that they're approved, they will move forward with that. We will submit the system change for the EMS to North Carolina Office and get them moving, and then do a site inspection before they could be up and running.
Madam Chairman, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Bringing another one on here, does it render lower costs in any way?
No, sir. As far as I know, the cost for...
So my contention is then, we can bring them in here, and now they're going to compete with others that earlier you said you, there's no problems with it, you know of. Could we potentially be putting somebody that's local out of business because of this? I mean, do we go for an eighth, and a ninth, and a tenth? Pretty soon, we got twenty of these organizations, and then...
But I would assume that in the, in the business world, that there's always that possibility. I'm not really the...
Well, but the point is, is that if it doesn't render us or the people using it a savings, then what advantage is it to have more of them?
So the opportunities seen by these different companies, they all provide different, you know, they do discharges from Vident Medical Center, who is the largest medical center east of I-95.
Right.
And it's my understanding from a number of these companies, especially White Oak and Roanoke, our most two recent companies, that there has been more or less this unending supply of discharge opportunities to take people home from the hospital here and in the community. And another way to look at it, I guess, is that DSS and others utilize these transport companies for Medicaid and underinsured persons that need medical transportation in the community. And we have had issues in the past where there's not been enough ambulances on the road to be able to take some of these folks where they need to go. And so there may be opportunities on both sides of that.
When did that occur?
In the last eighteen months. I don't know what day, but...
So if the other six were sitting here, I wonder what they would be saying if they could have a voice and say, hey, we want them or we don't. Again, this is my third rhetorical question of the day.
I understand.
Tom, I was just gonna, if you'll let Scott, I think, can speak to your question a little bit.
I was gonna interject two points. One, the power boards, they're thinking, not that it dictates the existing board, but the power boards had the whole thought that laissez-faire economics, that the market adjusts itself in terms of number of non-emergency providers in Pitt County operate, was kind of the thinking. We as staff had raised that question. The other point to keep in mind is that in times of emergency situations, and correct me if I'm wrong, Jim, we can call upon the non-emergency providers to come in to transport as a provider, per se?
Like during a flood or whatever.
Right.
That's correct. So once they are approved here, they are added to our list of agencies who we can call on as part of our mutual aid plan. If we have a shortage of ambulances or providers, then we, communications can activate them to transport patients.
Well, I can understand that. But Scott, the argument that you made about competition doesn't apply, because it's a one-way street here. There is apparently no economic advantage. Competition has got to render itself in economy. And so for that argument, I discharge it as not really factual, because it's, that doesn't apply in this case.
And they are here, so she may would like to speak.
Can I recognize the attorney instead of... Okay.
I just wanted to point out as well that we do have a non-emergency transport provider on the EMS Oversight Committee who does have a say in the consideration and recommendation to this board as it relates to another provider coming into the county.
I have a question.
Just, okay, would you like to say something, ma'am?
Okay.
Okay, would you identify yourself, please? Mary, I'll get you in a minute.
My name is Carly Coward, and I'm Director of Business Development with North State Medical Transport, and this is my fifth year being with North State. I just want to clarify one thing that sets our company apart from the remaining five or six. We are an ALS level service, with while I don't believe we're being let in ALS, we are able to handle, we are a paramedic level, so we're able to assist Vident System with ventilator patients, which those companies are not able to do. We discharge people from Vident Greenville going to UNC Chapel Hill, Duke Health Systems, down to Wilmington, New Hanover. So that does set us apart from those other companies. Again, we partner with East Care. They call us when they are in need for these ALS transports on a daily basis. And so this just gives us an opportunity to be closer for the hospital.
What does ALS stand for?
Advanced Level Support.
Okay.
The other non-emergencies, they are basic level support, except MedX. I believe they do have one ALS unit in Wilson County.
Okay, good answer to my question.
Thank you.
And I also think that the EMS Oversight Committee, none of these are invited in without the EMS Oversight Committee supporting that, because I remember back when I served on that and when we started this, one of the things we were trying to protect was overdoing the number. And it's not just the service that's rendered, but actually the number. We want everybody to be able to make money and stay here and not come in and leave. So I think that kind of answers our question. Thank you. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. We'll vote.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're down to reappointments.
Yes, I'm...
Ex-Chairman Owens would not be very proud of us today, by the way, folks, on our timeline. Okay.
Yes, our number seven, reappointments to Development Commission. You actually have five people coming off. Former County Commissioner Jimmy Garrus, who will be replaced by Commissioner Chris Nunley, per the chairman's appointment. The other four you have coming off, two are eligible for reappointment, Dr. Michael Harris and Daniel Van Leer. The other two, who are not eligible for reappointment, would be Lakeisha Forbes and Tom Asbell, and Wanda Uhas, the director, is saying that they'll come forward at a later date with those two. So they're asking for the reappointment of Dr. Harris and Mr. Van Leer today.
A motion?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Okay, let's vote, please.
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, our appointment and reappointment to the PC Nursing Home Adult Care Community Awareness Group.
Yes, the committee's commissioners recommending the appointment of Chris Woods to this committee, and also the reappointment of Patricia Chadwick.
And I think these people have to have special...
Yes, ma'am.
...characteristics.
And training.
Okay.
So move.
So move, okay. Second?
Second.
Let's vote, please.
Aye.
Thank you. And the appointment to the Pitt County Farm and Food Council, and I think we have a recommendation from Ms. Scoot.
Yes, recommending that Mr. Yourdandies, otherwise known as Jay Bastardo, be appointed.
Okay, motion?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Your vote, please.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. And we've reached our closed session time for this meeting. Do we need to hear from you first before we make a motion?
You do, by law.
Yes, ma'am.
I recite your basis for going into closed session. It's been suggested that this board go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143, 318.11A3, to consult with an attorney employed by the public body in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege. A six, to consider qualifications, competence, performance, character, and fitness of or conditions of initial employment of an individual public officer or employee or prospective public officer or employee. And also under subsection A1, to prevent the disclosure of confidential information, if you will so move.
Motion to go in closed session?
Second? To go into closed session?
Yes.
Okay, we have a second. Okay, let's vote. Okay.
Motion to approve.
Okay. Um...
Motion to approve.
Okay. Um... 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 Okay.
Thank you for being patient. We're coming out of closed session. We have... Does anyone have a motion?
I do have a motion to approve the contents-only closed session amended from October 1st, 2018.
Is there a second?
Second.
Let's vote, please. We need to do it by hand.
Aye.
Thank you. And now we'll entertain the commissioner's comments. We'll start at this end with the newbie. One of the newbies.
Just look forward to the new year, working with everybody, and excited to see what the future holds.
Aye.
No comments. All done. Happy New Year to everybody.
Okay.
Happy New Year.
Happy New Year.
And I will say that the length of our last two meetings has been the... On behalf of the fact that we've only met once in both months, and we usually have two meetings, so just to encourage our new members that this is not the length of our meetings or has not been in the past. And we need to pass these up to either Scott or Janice.
Yes, we collect the closed session materials.
All right. Yeah, I have something I'd like to say. I really wish that this would get a lot of local press. And that has to do with gasoline prices. You've heard people complaining about it. Well, I have occasions I have to go to Little Washington, Lenora County, and over into New Bern and Craven County. And consistently, gas prices are 20 to 32 cents cheaper all around the city of Greenville. Now, you know, we talked about free enterprise a little while ago. If this isn't price fixing, I don't know what it is. How can you have in a localized area gas prices that much higher without it being... Now, it may be done on a... You know, they call each other what your price is going to be or whatever. And I'm all in favor of competition in the free market. But this isn't the free market. And the gas stations locally in Greenville should be ashamed of themselves how they're taking advantage of students. And we have a lot of very poor people in Pitt County. And they get hit the hardest by this.
Thank you. Mary?
Yes, I have a comment. Happy New Year to all the residents of Pitt County and the board members, and the new ones especially. I look forward to working with you. But I would like to remind everyone, we've had good weather, and this is a good time for us to exercise our personal privilege by picking up the trash in our own yard and across the street. We need a county that's going to look inviting to everyone, for business and residents alike, to work, play, and worship in our county, that as the development. So let's be good stewardships of our county and pick up the trash and remove it where we can. And those with open bed trucks, please cover your trucks or bag your trash. Thank you. Have a wonderful year, and I look forward to hearing from you.
Thank you, Mary. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
No move.
Okay, motion to adjourn in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
See you next month.